Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mr. Bjergad?
Here.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak? Ms. Howes?
Here. Open forum pursuant to forty-two dash forty-six dash sixty, maximum three minutes per person. Anyone want to sign up for open forum? Mike Clifford?
Yep, Mike Clifford, four eighty-nine Black Plain Road. My main purpose in coming here tonight is just wish you all a happy new year. But since I'm here, I'm going to talk about a couple of other things, too. So the first one is my question about the audit report. Do we, I've looked online at this municipal affairs office and it's not up yet, and I believe it was due on the thirty-first, so is it in?
No, it was extended to January thirtieth.
Did we ask for an extension?
Yep.
Okay.
We were thinking, back from that, one of the key areas, we were still waiting for the true uphill, considering what's out there on the sewer. We've been out.
Well, just checking on where the audit is. And the other thing I wanted to just remind you of again and speak about again is, I really would love to see one of you put it on the agenda to have the, all boards and committees file their minutes online on the Secretary of State's website. I think Joanne would probably appreciate that, too, because then she wouldn't have to take the phone call saying, you know, did the municipal building affairs or whatever file their minutes yet? Do they have anything in the binder I can look at and stuff like that? So it's a pain in the neck for her, and it really is no big deal to file those minutes yourself if you're the chairman of the committee or the secretary of the committee. If, once they learn how to do it, it's a piece of cake type thing. So it'd be really great to have that. And the last thing is, I really miss seeing Paulette there because as a viewer at home in the last couple of meetings, it drove me absolutely nuts when Mr. Igliozi did not speak into that microphone and you couldn't hear a word. And nobody, Paulette used to say, use your microphone, but nobody said, use your microphone. So half that meeting was missed. So if somebody could be the, you know, the microphone person, or at least make everybody turn it on at the beginning of the meeting so you know it's on, and people can hear, it's really frustrating. I mean, there were a lot of people that weren't, I pointed him out, but there were others who couldn't be heard either. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne, can you just make a point that all boards and committees, someone is trained how to do it because that way it doesn't fall on you? Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to sign up for open forum? Nussmafield Town Council sitting as Board of Licensing, The Turk LLC DBA, Rise Up Nutrition, new owner David Nigera, and applying for Victorling Holiday Sales License located at nine hundred Victory Highway, Unit seventeen. Anyone, you want to get up and just go to the podium, please?
Good evening, my name is David Nigera.
And you're here to get a new license, taking over this business?
Yep, so it's currently Rise Up Nutrition, so we just took it over and we are keeping the same name.
Madam Clark, everything's in order?
The only thing different is that they requested a holiday sales, but we have all the paperwork for that, so he's all good to go.
Anyone else have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the sales for Turk LLC, Rise Up Nutrition, to approve their application for, general business application.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bjergad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. Thank you, you're all set.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good luck.
Old Business Discussion by Council Board of Other Action on Status/Progress Report of Specific Items. The first one is the Facilities Manager.
Yes, Madam President, I did meet with Paul Nordstrom two weeks ago, as well as DJ OSHA, to get a complete overview of the activities of the Asset Management Commission. In those conversations, I made it very clear that the administration is very strongly in support of what they are doing, and that we, I promised that either myself or the Director of Planning will attend all of their meetings. And they have a meeting scheduled for the thirteenth of this month, and that I think they're going to be planning on coming to the Town Council, probably in the month of February, to provide an overview of what they're trying to do.
Great, thank you.
May I say something on this issue? And I was speaking with the Director of Public Works the other night, when they had the Christmas caroling, and this was a little bit of a surprise, and I'm just as guilty as anybody else, I guess, but since we've been talking about this from the beginning, nobody's ever reached out to the Director of Public Works to get his, his take on this, whether or not this is even necessary, or any input that he might have on this. The charter does say that the Director of Public Works isn't, is, all the maintenance and upkeep of the buildings falls under his responsibility, so it would be kind of good to get his input on exactly if this is, he might, he might not even think this is necessary. He might think that they can handle, or they can handle in-house. So I think it'd be important to hear what he has to say on this issue.
I, I agree, and in fact, the Director of Public Works is going to be involved in the Asset Management Commission. I think it's very important, however, to differentiate between property maintenance and long-term asset management. It's a much harder, not that the Public Works Director doesn't understand this, but it's a very highly sophisticated effort, so I think some, and we actually had this conversation at the last Town Council meeting, about maintenance of facilities versus asset management. But in my conversations with Paul Nordstrom, who's the chairman of the commission, I told him that the commission would have direct involvement from the administration, which would include people like the Public Works Director.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I just, just to tail on that, I think last meeting we kind of talked about it, be, like their main, a lot of their main focus would be like the capital expenditures going forward, like a five, ten-year plan on buildings that need to be done, so it's more than just the basic upkeep and just making sure it's clean, it's really just making sure the buildings don't deteriorate and they get what they need. Any other questions on that? The grant writer, potential of hiring new grant writer requests, proposals, RFPs from other firms, Mr. Bjergad?
Yeah, I asked this to be put on the agenda because we have had this, this grant writer now for quite some time. The good people, I've spoken to both of them, they are very nice people. The way the process is supposed to work is the grant writer will interview members of the administration, different department heads, which he, which this person did. They find out our needs and our wants, and then they should go out and look for grants and then come back to us and say, this is what's available. They should initiate, they should try to find the grants that are available. I'm, I'm a little disappointed in what we've gotten out of this company so far, as far as they're, what they've initiated and what they've brought to the town. I haven't seen any big numbers come, come for, for water, for whatever. I, as far as I know, that they haven't, and we're not the beneficiary of anything that they actually initiated. So they have helped out with the paperwork and the processing of some of the grants that our people have initiated, but I would like to see more out of our grant writer. Two years ago, I mentioned a grant writer that we should have hired, and this person was a rock star, and I think that we should go back out for an RFQ for grant writers and start looking, start looking around for somebody who can deliver for what we're paying for. I'm not going to get into the, what happened at all last, two years ago, it's not important. What's important is just going forward now with the right person, the right firm, and that firm is out there, that firm is willing to come before the council and work with us. So I think that we should start looking around and request an RFQ for other grant writers. Specifically, if I could just mention one thing about one of the grant writer that I mentioned two years ago, just local, locally, this one's from, this one's from Cumberland, Grants Under Andoja Now Total Two Point Nine Million and Expected to Grow. North Providence Has Secured More Than Three Million Dollars Towards Key Projects With Lisa Andoja. Lincoln, this was a recent one, seven point three million dollars in grants since hiring Andoja. The Valley Breeze did an article, Lisa Andoja Is The Woman Behind All That Money. This is from Smithfield, Tom Renew's Contract With Grant Writer Who Brought In One Point Three Million During Pandemic. From Cumberland, Powered By, Powered By Andoja, Cumberland Continues Hot Streak On Grants. So let's just, I think we should open up the process again and put an RFQ and see who responds, and if she's one of them, I think that's one that should be looked in, very seriously looked into. There's no, no vote or anything on this, just something I wanted to bring up.
So you don't want to do a vote to do RF, would it be RFP?
Oh, I'd be happy to do that.
RFP?
I'm sorry, it would be an RFP, and there's actually two separate things that we need to talk about, but it's really, I don't know if it would be eligible under the current agenda item. I've spoken to Councilman Bjergard about this, as well as I've met with you, Council President, about it, and I agree, we need to, we, I think we need to change. That would require us to effectively terminate our current arrangement, because we have a six-day cancellation clause within the contract, and to go out for RFP, and I'm currently writing an RFP for those services. I'm concerned on the interim, which I expressed to you, Council President, that there's a couple things that I'm specifically concerned about that I don't want to lose any time over. So I've actually approached one of those grant writers and asked if that person would be willing to work on a short-term basis with us, just to deal with two issues, knowing that we're going to go out for RFP for grant writing services. I don't want to lose the time we're going to have to lose by going out to an RFP and go through the selection process again. And my particular concerns relate to the congressional appropriations for the multi-generational facility. There's quite a lot of documentation we have to do, coordination with Senator Reed's office, there's two grants associated with that, so we're, we're trying to line that up right now. We can, we can tie up We can, we can tie up the services if the grant writer is willing for, under the $5,000 threshold, to tie this person up for at least a, a month or two, just to get us through this. Um, but yeah, we need a switch. Um, not a criticism of anybody, it's just a statement that I think we need fresh eyes, um, and somebody who's deeply connected with the decision-makers in Rhode Island, um, and the congressional delegation and their staffs.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, I'd be willing to, uh, I'd be hap- happy to put a, make a motion for an RFP. Now, can you just educate me a little bit? So, uh, an RFP versus an RFQ, I would think that, I don't want to get stuck with hiring somebody just based on they have a lower bid, I want...
No, we don't have to.
We don't have to award to the lowest bidder. We have to award to the lowest qualified bidder.
Okay.
The RFP that I would, am writing is a little bit more targeted than the last one was, which emphasizes not just track record in Rhode Island, but also clear, um, evidence of their strong working relationship with the various departments within the state that are providing funding support, as well as our congressional delegation, which are critical.
Right.
Um, and so I want to write that a little bit differently. I don't think we need to go to RFQ, just go straight RFP, which is going to have clearly part of the evaluation is their qualifications.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Town Administrator, can I just summarize? I want to be sure that I was following. So it, it sounds as though if we, if we do determine that we want to vote, um, to move this to RFP, to determine if there are other grant writers that are more appropriate or, um, for our needs, we would have six days to terminate that contract with our current? You, you said six, I don't remember.
Two months.
Two months, okay, six, okay, sixty days, okay. Thank you, thank you. And then you said that there were two short-term needs, one of them being the congressional appropriation for the multi-generational center. Was there, what was the second short?
There's actually two grants that are related to the multi-generational facility, yeah.
Okay.
And, and my concern there, and I, this may be, um, I don't think this is going to happen, but we do have a new administration that's coming into Washington.
Okay, yes.
So I think we need to really dig our heels in to make sure that we're well-moving in the right direction. I don't think the new administration would pull back congressional appropriations, because to do that means the administration be pulling back money from areas which, which they, he received a lot of support.
Right.
But I want to be all, uh, very cautious here.
Yeah.
And make sure we're ahead of the curve.
Yeah, absolutely. So then, in the interim, you're suggesting that we hire an interim grant writer to go after these two grants, while also in parallel pulling together the RFP to go out to long-term grant partners?
The grants have already been awarded.
Okay.
But there's a lot of documentation that we have to do now with, with the federal, um, grant system.
Mm-hmm.
So there's a lot of documentation, local protocol that we have to go through here to, to dot all our Is, cross our Ts. That's what I want to make it sure is done now.
Okay.
But the money has been awarded to the town already.
Okay. Thank you.
Does she want to make a motion, or?
Yeah, I would, uh, thank you. I would, uh, make a motion, I would like to make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to go out for an RFP in search of a new grant writer.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher O?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you need authorization to, does he need authorization to, for the short-term part of it, or?
The, the funds that I'd be looking to appropriate within the allowance that I, as the Administrator, can appropriate.
Okay.
It's under the $5,000 threshold.
Okay.
And would that just come out of the line, item of grant writer?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one is the human resource position. As me and the Administrator had a conversation, um, we're kind of truing up the actual job description, um, which I think is fine, the one that you, we had talked about. So, um, we can move forward with that.
It, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, and solicitor, uh, if you can clarify this, creating this position, I believe, is an ordinance. And since we changed the, um, the description a little bit from the, I don't know if we have to come back to the council to have that approved as an ordinance.
It was just really the job description, right?
It is a job description.
Yeah.
And we want to push hard to get it out there right away.
Yeah. So it was just the actual creation of the position, there was no job description in that?
I think that's exactly the way we did it. We created the position and we even made sure that it was not limited to part-time, I recall.
Yeah.
Because we weren't sure how that was going to work out. I'm, I'm going by memory here.
Right, yeah, I know.
And, um, the job description is a separate, a separate item that can be created outside of the ordinance.
Okay.
We're going to do this a little bit differently. I mean, obviously, we'll post it the typical ways that we post it. That didn't work too well for us. Um, we're going to be a lot more aggressive. Uh, we, I, I, as part of my transition team, I brought in a woman to work with our finance department in the areas of human resource management. She's a human resource executive, and she gave us some additional thoughts, which, uh, the finance director took into consideration. We're going to start using her as well, to use her network, to start getting out there to see if we can draw up interest in this position.
Go ahead. Uh, let's see, Municipal Building Review Task Force. Um, there's no new update since last one. Um, Eric Ami and his, um, team are working to get everything up they need, and then we're supposed to have a meeting, um, towards the end of January with the administration. So there's really no other further development there. Uh, new business, discussion by Council vote on other action on Rhode Island Energy's installation of new pole located at 447 Buxton Street. Mr. Pendigas?
Good evening, Ray Pendigas, Director of Public Works. Uh, you should have in front of you a petition from Rhode Island Energy in Verizon, New England, requesting permission to install a new pole at 447 Buxton Street. This will give, uh, this will be able to give them service to a new customer. I have recommended my approval for this installation, but we need formal approval from you, uh, so that it can be recorded with the Town Clerk.
Can I ask a question? Um, is this a residence?
It is.
Okay.
And this is just the normal formality that we always go through, right?
It is, they have to have your, uh, your approval before it can be recorded with the Town Clerk.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve, uh, Rhode Island Energy's installation of the new pole located at 447 Buxton Street.
Okay.
We have some motion, a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher O?
Yes.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion by Council vote on other action update, bid proposal for senior support grant, Ms. Monin.
Hi, Bobby Monigan, Assistant Planner. In December, I came before the Town Council and asked for you to grant, award the transportation grant to Sincere Transportation for transporting seniors from the facilities to shopping. In the fir-, for, they went in December, and when we received an invoice, we found that the company was billing us per person, per hour, instead of just per hour, per vehicle. So we went back to them, basically saying, "This is what the bid proposal, the bid said." This is how it was explained, and that that was not acceptable. And they came back to us with a new rate of $45 to $50 for non-handicapped vehicles per hour, not per person, per hour, and $60 per hour for handicapped, accessible vehicles, both including mileage. With these rates, it still remains lower than the first student transportation, which was $80 per hour for a non-handicapped vehicle and $85 per hour for a handicapped, accessible vehicle. So I'm asking that we revise the resolution. I have a new resolution to award this grant to Sincere Transportation with the new rates. Uh, they've already done two trips. The residents at the Meadows are very pleased, so we'd like to continue as soon as we can.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Or maybe a few, thank you. Um, Bobby, I also really appreciate the way that this memorandum is organized, like, super, super efficient and effective. Um, it was a really easy read, and really got to, like, what, what we need to discuss. Um, as far as the rate for the non-handicap service per hour, per vehicle, it says 45 to 50. What determines 45, what determines 50?
I would think it's the number of people, how big of a vehicle they need to use.
Okay, so the, the size of the vehicles differs.
And the, the, the facilities are in, coordinate this with Sincere Transportation, so they will tell them how many, they have to tell them by Tuesday for Friday, how many, um, residents are going to participate.
Okay, and then for the month of December, how many people did we have use the service?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
We got the bill, it's $135 for three hours, I think, yeah. So, um, that was much better than the first bill that we received.
Okay. And was that just one vehicle, or was it a handicap and a non-handicap?
No, it was one non-handicapped vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So if there's no residents that want to go anywhere, we don't get billed, right?
We do not.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Like to make a motion to amend the, uh, resolution?
Um, I will make a motion to amend the resolution, um, for the sincere contract.
I just think, um, Councilwoman, I just think, just to, for clarity, it's, I would just make a motion to approve the revised resolution, because that's what's in front of you, and this is what you want them to sign, is that right, Bobby?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the revised contract with sincere. Resolution with sincere, thank you.
That's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher O?
Yes.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Madam President, may I just ask, Bobby, I don't see any contract for the administrative signature or any document. Do you need the administrative signature on anything? Or do you just need the revised resolution approved?
Uh...
I would just...
I'd have to look at the contract, I'm not positive of that.
So I would just, Madam President, out of an abundance of caution, not to waste time, if there are any documentation that require the administrator to sign a revised contract,
Mm-hmm.
that the council authorize that signature as well.
Okay. Did you want to amend?
Okay.
This is a lot. Okay.
All right, I'd also like to add to the original, um, motion that we authorize the signature from the T, uh, Town Administrator for Sincere Transportation in the event that the new contract has to be signed.
Okay.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Christopher O?
Yes.
Ms. South?
Yes. Do you want to stay up there, Bobby?
Sure.
Um, discussion by Council vote...
The next one's a little bit more complicated.
All right, one second. Discussion by Council vote on other action on award of bid for Maori Tower rehabilitation.
Okay, in, um, in April 2022, we got an appropriation from Senator Reed's office for $140,000, um, under the Department of Justice to repair the Maori Communication Tower. At that time, we contracted with PAR to provide professional services. They did an evaluation and assessment there to design and repairs, the repairs to the tower. They prepared the bid documents, they gave us bid assistance, and they did a bid review. And they will also be involved in the construction phase supervision of the project. So in November of this, last year, we went out to bid, and we opened three bids on December 16th, and we transferred those bids over to PAR, and they reviewed them and compared them to the original prices that PAR had come up with for each stage, and then compared the bids to each other. The low bidder was a, a company called Mill City Construction. Um, so they compared Mill City Construction's bid proposal to the contract, and they found that it was congruous with the PAR's estimated cost. So PAR came up with an estimated cost for the project and each step, and Mill Construction, following the bid documents, did the same thing, and they compared them, and they thought that they were, they were similar. Um, so PAR came out and recommended an, the award for construction contact to, to Mill City. It was the lowest bid. The base bid was the lowest bid, and, um, we've, they've, they've handed in everything that they needed to hand in. So this resolution is to award the bid to Mill City Construction. It's a, it's, their, their total price, base bid, was $151,396. The grant was for $140,000. So we expect to use the 140 from the grant, and then we have a capital fund reserve account with $86,733.69 in case we need that, or we will need it. The, the contractor will also go up and do some environmental work for asbestos and for lead. That may increase the price of the project. We won't know until that's done. That's one of the first steps that they're going to do. So, the resolution is to award the bid to Mill City Construction and hopefully get this project started soon. The, the grant expires on June 1st. They have a due date of April 30th, 2025, so we'd like to get this started as soon as possible.
Madam President, can I ask a question? I'm sorry, Bobby, I could have asked you this.
That's okay.
Um, on the potential environmental remediation, um, is the contractor required to get at least three costs from subs for the environmental remediation? Because they won't be doing that on their own.
I don't know that.
Can we make sure?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I have a question more for the solicitor. I'm, you know, Bobby, I might have, uh, I'd probably let you go on for nothing, because I got to recuse on this, on this vote. So now we only have two people, so we're going to have to wait until there's more councilors here in order to, uh, in order to vote on it, right? Well... I need to think about that. I know you're here for the quorum, and that makes the quorum valid, and when the vote comes, you just would recuse, that would be the record of your vote. You won't vote no, you won't vote yes, you vote recuse, and I would think two to zero will pass. Okay.
Madam President, I have a few questions. Um, Bobby, it looks like there's a significant gap in time between 2021, when we contracted with PAR Engineering for the professional services for the Maori Fire Tower, as well as when the grant was, um, when we received the grant in August 2022, and now we're just going out for bid. What, what contributed to the gap in time? Not to put you on the spot.
I know at the time that this began, we didn't have access to the site, and they, and REMA was putting in a monopole.
Okay.
A lot of the antennas were moved from Maori Tower over to the monopole.
Okay.
So this project went on for some time. They, they built a road in the east mid, and now we have access to it. But it's still, it's gated, it's, um, controlled by REMA.
Okay.
Um, so that's what took so long.
Okay. And then, when will we know, given that, you know, our base bid is 151, but the ad alternate for Mill City is around six, is around $66,000? When will we know whether or not we would need any of the ad alternate services?
I've been told I, we're not going to do the ad alternates.
Okay.
We're just going to start with the original 151.
Okay.
Do that.
So it's not something like, once we really get into the work, at that point, you know, they may determine that we need something more that might contribute to the ad alternate?
I think the ad alternates are above and beyond.
Okay, okay.
Ray can help me with this.
Okay.
He's been working on this, too.
Good evening, uh, good question. So, we don't want... So we don't want to add anything to the base bid right now.
Okay.
We want to see what the environmental issue may or may not be.
Mm-hmm.
What that cost may be or not.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can make a determination moving forward on whether we do one ad alternate, all of them, or whatever, depending on how the funds fall out. So we don't want to get ahead of ourselves if we don't have the funds.
Right.
To complete the thing.
No, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you want to make the motion? You want to make that? Want to do it?
I'm not good at these motions yet, Cam.
It's easy. Just read it right off your computer.
Yeah.
Well, I'm on digital, so I have to scroll all the way up. So I guess this is the downside.
I'll make a motion to approve the award of bid for Maori Tower rehabilitation to Mill City Construction in the amount of $151,396. One second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Biragod?
I recuse.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Ms. Alve?
Yes.
Now, in this case, Mr. President, Madam President, I see that you've only submitted the bid award. The actual contract's not here to be approved or signed. So I just don't want any confusion that this somehow is authorized, the administrator's on a contract that's not before the council. This is awarding them the bid.
Right.
Now they're going to give you a contract.
Yeah.
Nobody's seen that contract yet.
Okay.
So it's going to have to come back on the next agenda with the contract that the council approves and authorizes the administrator to sign.
Okay. So Joanne, can we add that on the next agenda, please?
I will speak with Bobby about that.
Mr. Solicitor, most of the time with some of the bids that we do, I'm not saying it is or isn't the correct way, but the signed bid document with the numbers is normally the contract that we use.
That's fine. All I'm saying is if there's a contract that they present to you, it has to come back before the council.
Right.
If this is awarded based upon these documents, I'm not judging that. I just don't want you to be thinking that the council has authorized the administrator to sign a contract as they've never seen. That's all I'm saying.
No, and I understand that. It's just that, in the past, I know that the documents that I do for my bids, that is the contract, unless it's something specific that has to be included with it. But we can certainly come back and approve that. That's not a problem.
I'm not trying to slow you down.
Nope.
If there's no contract other than this bid document, and that's the way they do business, I have no problem with that. This isn't a significantly enormous contract, but I just wanted you to be aware that if there is another document that needs to be signed, you got to, you must provide it to the council and the administrator. That's all I'm saying.
So we'll contact Mill City tomorrow, see if this is good enough for their contract on us, and then we'll go from there.
All right, thank you.
So we're good, right? Where else?
The resolution? Do you want to sign the resolution?
We approved it, so Joanne will give it to us to sign.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion by council over other action and recommendation to participate in the municipal resiliency program and authorize resolution. Mr. Administrator, do you want to go over this?
Yes, I would. The Nature Conservancy and the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank have partnered in a program called the Municipal Resiliency Program. Effectively, the purpose of the program is to help cities and towns to better understand the risks that they have relative to increasing fluctuations and severity of climate events. A lot of this pertains to things such as flooding. They approached me to discuss participation in the program. Effectively, this requires no financial investment by the community. Rather, there will be some allocation of staff time to partner with the Infrastructure Bank to run a workshop in town, one workshop, in which the public will be asked to provide input into the various issues that we are facing. When that event is over with, and the Infrastructure Bank facilitates this, they use their staff, they write a final report. They write the final report, and they give it to us. We can use that report going forward when we do things such as updated comp plans, looking at changes in the zoning ordinance, all those kinds of factors that we, as a community, inevitably have to do. I think one of the real upsides here is that by participating in this program, we become eligible as a community in grants from the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. And I included in the package a list of the types of grants that they have actually provided. And if you see, some of them are very significant. So in order to get access to these challenge grants, we have to be part of the municipal resilience program. The administration has filled out the grant request, grant documentation. We are currently getting letters of support, and we are asking for the council to approve the resolution, which is required as part of this program. One thing I'd like to also point out, and I say this with some embarrassment, we are the only town in the entire state of Rhode Island that does not participate in this program. And for the life of me, I do not understand why, especially given the fact that it provides a gateway to potential funding. It also is a compliment to what the town recently completed. They did the Hazard Mitigation and Flood Management Plan that was approved by the council last, I think, June. This adds to that. It adds further clarity to it. So it is consistent with things that we've already been doing. So the administration is asking for the council to approve the resolution so that we can file this with the Nature Conservancy, the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, immediately.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
This isn't something where they'll have the hands and things that we do in the sense that they'll be like, oh, what you're doing is not green enough, you should be doing more, you know what I mean? Just saying, just ensuring that we're more, you don't have enough EV stations, or you should have more EV vehicles, or anything like that.
No, this is purely an advisory review that gives the state no authority. These are our rights. But it does provide us some additional information and some potential strategies, and provides opportunities for the public input. But no, there is nothing as a consequence of this that's going to force our hands to do anything. However, I would argue that if we are going to go back to them and ask for funding, I would suspect that that funding should be somewhat consistent with the recommendations that are coming out of what they are proposing. And the areas of particular concern in North Smithfield are the issues of flooding. We have several areas where we've experienced some severe flooding problems. This is the kind of program that we can help start to deal with those issues and to protect private property.
And town administrator, aside from flooding, are there any other projects that you think we could use this funding to?
It's a good question. I don't know whether or not we can use the funding for private property, but I do know that we have five dams in North Smithfield that are substandard and are highlighted by the state as substandard. If we can use Infrastructure Bank money to deal with those, that would also be of a great benefit to the town.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Administrator, the establish our local MRP core team, is that something through the town that the administration, like someone on your team?
Yes. We will put together a team, which would be department heads.
Yeah.
We will also reach out for key members of the public, particularly the business community, to participate, which is what happened when we did the Hazard Mitigation and Flood Management Plan. We did the same thing. That effectively becomes the core team, that we will work with the Nature Conservancy on this initiative.
Okay, great. All right, anyone have any other questions? Like to make a motion to approve the participation, the resolution to participate in the Municipal Resilience Program Workshop and Grant Program? That's a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And authorize a resolution?
Yeah, I said to approve the resolution, yeah.
Okay. Nope, that's good.
Roll call.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Ms. Alve?
Yes. All right, last item is open forum pursuant to 42-46-6D, maximum three minutes per person. Did anyone want to speak? Mr. Clifford?
I want to speak about the grant writer. I've got to get this off my chest because it's been bothering me for quite some time now. This is Rhode Island, and in Rhode Island, we have to get along, play with the bright people to get what we need out of everything in this state. And I think that's what we're doing with the grant writer now. We've sung the praises of Miss Anne Dozier, and I'm not denying she's not getting the grants. Obviously, the numbers speak for themselves. But she's also a very, very, very generous contributor to every politician in this state. If you go on the campaign website and look at her name for who she's contributed to, last time I looked, it was like $85,000 in total. There isn't a mayor, or a councilperson, or somebody, you know, in every municipality, in every single municipality, and at the state level as well. And what I resent about that is, it's like feeding into the program that I despise. I despise the fact that in Rhode Island, you have to know someone who knows someone to know someone, to get something. And this seems to me to be feeding into that same program. Here we have a person who's getting grants off the kazoo, not, you know, fabulous amounts, but $3 million is a lot of money. But, you know, and it's who she knows. And that's all it boils down to. And she's also very politically connected in the state and has a lot of friends in politics. And I just feel badly that we're joining into that group, or it looks like we're going to be joining into that group. And I'll remind you that when we first, when the first idea of having someone in the town write the grants was brought up, it was brought up by Mr. Owsowski, when he hired the town planner, Mr. Kravitz. And he raised the salary of Mr. Kravitz by, I think, $10,000 over what we were paying. And he said at the time, he writes grants, and we need a grant writer. And that's why we should pay him what we're going to pay him, and that's why we need to hire him. And I still would like to see someone internally being in charge of writing grants or getting grants, or even making it an option to the employees, who might want to make some more money, since they're not making the big bucks, you know, the assistant of this or the secretary of that. Maybe they'd like to put some effort into it and make some money on giving them a percentage of a grant if they write a grant for it. The grant writer has to sit down with that person anyway. And as a teacher, it used to drive me nuts, it used to drive a lot of us nuts, that the grant writer for the district used to come in your office and speak to you for four hours and then write a grant based on what you just told her. And then your name was never mentioned again. But it was, she did all the work, and she was the key person here. She knew all this stuff herself. She didn't have to rely on anybody else. So it's like a demoralizing thing. But the biggest thing to me is, we're just, we're playing into the system of what is Rhode Island. You want it done, you've got to do it with my people. And I really bitterly, I feel very badly if that's the direction that the town fits, you know, sees fit to go into, or has to go to, to get some money from grants. Sad.
Mike, I appreciate your perspective and your feedback. And if this does go out to RFP, it doesn't necessarily mean that we would approve, you know, the grant writer that was mentioned before. So I think with your perspective, that's definitely something that we could keep in mind. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in open forum? Anyone else? Like to, someone want to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. That was quick.